All right, everyone, welcome to the Monday, November 15th, 2021 Salina City Commission Meeting. I'd like to confirm with staff that the Kansas Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided.
Yes.
All right, then we'll proceed with roll call.
Mayor Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
If you're able, would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We don't have any awards and proclamations today, so that will take us to Citizens Forum. Citizens Forum is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that does not appear on today's agenda. I would request that you keep your remarks to three minutes and identify yourself by your first and last name and let us know where you're from. And with that, I will open up the floor to anyone who would like to speak today.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hodges and members of the City Council. My name is Patrick Harrington, I'm from Salina. Recent news of a possible fallout of a land deal that was to facilitate a large apartment complex is unfortunate, and I know personally embarrassing to this board, but it also presents an opportunity, and I think I might have a helpful perspective. I have observed since moving here that Salina has a housing crisis, and I've been here for 10 years. I participated in the 2020 census and knocked on many doors. In my estimation, almost a quarter of those doors that I knocked on were vacant. Might this be an indicator of our current housing situation? I know rental of a home or apartment can be risky, and I understand the anxiety that comes with renting what may be a family home where parents once lived or children grew up. I understand that it could be costly to renovate or to accomplish needed repairs. If Salina really wants to solve the housing crisis, it should consider other options than only encouraging builders to erect new homes on unused land. Pheasant season started this week for the youth, and this gave me the idea. I think it's time for Salina to enact an open season on housing. The build-it boom uses scientific data to indicate that $200,000 in higher homes are the way to attract new blood to Salina. Others use it to pitch for new high-paying jobs, and both of those want incentives. The reality today is that none of these approaches have been successful. There are hundreds of vacant homes in Salina, most of them north of Magnolia. They could accommodate singles, couples, and families, and many are in neighborhoods that have close shopping, schools, and the renovated and spiffed-up areas of downtown Salina. They need our support as well. All these homes are within a more commonly accessible price range. Not everyone that moves here wants a new house or a mortgage. An open season on affordable housing would complete this. You have provided many years of incentives to builders with little or no success on this housing crisis, and I think it's time to provide that same encouragement and partnership with existing homeowners who may need an incentive to bring their existing home to market. My idea is this: provide tax credits, street improvements, lead pipe abatement—I understand there's 100 homes in Salina that have lead pipes—tree removal, planting of new trees, repairing sidewalks that are heaved by old trees, and maintenance of dilapidated areas, installing streetlights and other solutions to solve this problem that current and future residents all need. This could offer incentives for vacant land or vacant housing that have been vacant for two years or more. Ask the Chamber of Commerce to provide chamber bucks to services and stores in Salina. These actions will stimulate the local small economy as owners visit the hardware stores, make contracts for carpeting, siding, repairs, upgrades, tree removal, or roofing. This would also support local existing jobs and local working families. Another new build with exclusive sales agreement made with a single provider are no way to spread the public wealth or trust. It's time for the city to actually support the North End for a change.
Mr. Harrington, if I could ask you to wrap up, I appreciate hearing your very, very thoughtful—
Oh, I didn't notice.
No, that's quite right.
I'm there, I'm there.
I would encourage you, if you're not able to get through all of it, to email us.
Yeah, I just have—
That would be wonderful.
—one more sentence.
Absolutely.
Yeah? So please declare the open season on Salina housing in its emergency. Please consider and make a serious effort to correct the housing prices and to support small and local homeowners. And finally, please support further discussion by adding to the housing crisis the further discussion as an agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Harrington.
Dalton McDowell, Salina. When are you five commissioners going to hold the man responsible that should be held responsible for this whole fire department deal, right there, responsible? Chief—the fire chief, this has been going on since '07. Fire chief's been here since '16. Mike's been here a lot longer. You guys don't have any control over the personnel issues that he has control over, but you do have control over finding a new city manager. Melissa, you said this back in August, that you wish your city commissioners would do something. It's time that you do something. And I know, Mike, you're not going to do anything, I know that, but it's time that you guys do something to get the public trust back in the city. Mainly, getting rid of Mike would help a lot. There's contractors that refuse to work in the city limits because they don't want to deal with—or work for the city because they don't want to deal with the stupidity that you have to deal with to work with the city of Salina.
Norm, now, Salina, as Dalton said, we need to take some action. We need to take action at the local level. They are arresting and prosecuting people in Washington for abuse of power.
Is there anyone else here today who would like to speak at Citizens Forum? I'm not sure—I see anyone virtually that would like to speak either, so thanks, everyone, for your comments, and we will move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of November 8, 2021.
Any issues with the minutes of November 8?
No.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes and will take us to item 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading, ordinance number 21-11087, amending Chapter 38, Article 1 of the City of Salina Code by adopting the 2021 Standard Traffic Ordinance for Kansas Cities, published by the League of Kansas Municipalities.
This ordinance was passed on first reading last week on November 8th. Since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from members of the public? And if not, we'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve ordinance number 21-11087 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11087 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, and that motion passes 4-0. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, second reading, ordinance number 21-11088, amending Chapter 25, Article 1 of the City of Salina Code by adopting the 2021 Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities, published by the League of Kansas Municipalities, and repealing existing Section
This ordinance was passed on first reading on November 8th, and since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from members of the public? If not, we'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Hodges, I move we approve ordinance number 21-11088 on second reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 21-11088 on second reading. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Peck.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye, and that motion passes 4-0. Item 7.3.
Item 7.3, adopt resolution number 21-8001, approving the donation of a fire apparatus to the Salina Area Technical College.
All right, Mr. Sprague.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As I believe you know, you authorized the purchase of a new, what we call Quint fire apparatus. We placed that order, taken delivery of that, that then kind of starts a transition of equipment through our equipment replacement schedule in the fire department, resulting in the vehicle that was in service that's been replaced by this new acquisition being placed in reserve, and the piece of equipment that was in reserve now being surplus for our purposes and us needing to make a determination on how to dispose of that. Recognizing that, the Salina Area Technical College reached out to us and asked whether the city would consider donating that piece of equipment to their fire sciences program. So, as a little bit of background, the new Quint III has been delivered to the department and placed in service. The current Quint III, which is an American La France fire apparatus, was moved to reserve status and re-designated as Quint IV, and then the reserve Quint that we had as Quint IV is 27 years old, and it's scheduled to be retired as part of our program. That piece of equipment is a 1994 Spartan Gladiator with a 75-foot ladder. We made effort to try to identify means that we could dispose of it and what the value of that might be. It may seem a little bit odd, but it's been our practice, as well as other fire departments, to use Purple Wave as a means of disposing of that equipment. There's also another agency that will do that for a fee, and so we reached out to them to try to get some sense of the value of the equipment. As part of the staff report, there's four different pieces of equipment, similar in age and similar in make and model as the piece of equipment in question. Those values, those estimated values, range from essentially $30,000 to $65,000. I would note that the one that's probably closest to our piece of equipment is a 1994 Spartan 75-foot Quint at the $30,000 level. The others are a couple of years newer and seem to have a little bit more value. So, as I mentioned, we received a request from the Technical College about the possibility of donating that piece of equipment rather than us selling it as surplus. You should also have at your seat correspondence from Greg Nichols from the Technical College, kind of reiterating the basis of that request. The other thing that I would tell you, well, a couple of things. We do have a history of donating surplus fire equipment in certain instances. The best example that I know of is we donated a 1981 engine to Crisis City. They do training exercises there as well, on the kind of the National Guard military level. And then we also provided you some information about just what Kansas law says about the authority to dispose of surplus property. Essentially, it does acknowledge that Home Rule Authority of Cities grants the ability to do that, and there's kind of a public purpose doctrine there, and so we went ahead and drafted a resolution just to form—if you choose, as a governing body, to go in that direction. We've drafted a resolution for you to formalize a determination that that donation would be in the public interest, and offered up potential findings that include that the surplus Quint is scheduled to be retired from reserve status and removed from the existing Salina Fire Department fleet. Salina Tech has requested that the governing body consider donating the surplus Quint to Salina Tech to help it grow and promote its fire science certificate program. The fire science program at Salina Tech began through a partnership between USD 305, Salina Tech, and the City of Salina. The Salina Fire Department and city staff were instrumental in the design and progression of the fire science program, from coursework to a technical certificate approved by the Kansas Board of Regents and the Higher Learning Commission. Salina Tech and its fire science certificate program would benefit by having the surplus Quint onsite for students to better learn the skills needed for each of the classes offered within the fire science certificate program, while purchasing such equipment is outside the normal purchasing capability of such a newer program, and the donation of the surplus Quint will improve Salina Tech's ability to train future firefighter—firefighters, including those who would potentially serve Salina and its surrounding communities. If you find those findings acceptable, they are in the draft, you certainly could amend, delete, add to, as you see fit. With respect to a fiscal note, obviously, we don't know the final determination of value, but we did try to provide to you an estimate of what we might be able to gain if we tried to sell it as a surplus item, and that value range was at $30,000 to $65,000. And the options that we identified for your consideration would be to adopt the resolution, and if you do so, that makes a determination that it's in the public interest to donate it to the fire science program at Salina Area Technical College. You could adopt that resolution with amendments as you deem appropriate. You could postpone consideration. We're not on any deadline to take action as far as disposing of that piece of equipment. If there's additional information that you'd like, or anything that you'd like for your further consideration, or you could vote to deny the request, and we would proceed with a more typical disposal of trying to sell it for whatever value we can get out of it. Having said that, there are representatives of the Salina Area Technical College here, Greg Nichols and Larry Pankratz. I think they may wish to address you. I certainly think they'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. And then additionally, Shane Pearson from Emergency Services Director, and Mr. Sprague, our Chief of Training, are here if we have any technical questions that they might be able to answer.
Thank you very much. I do see Mr. Nichols and Mr. Pankratz here, and if you'd like to address the commission, you're more than welcome to, and—
Well, good afternoon, Commissioners and city employees and audience. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you to ask, on behalf of our students, on behalf of our community, to invest within our own city and our county. We don't have a taxing authority. We were part of USD 305 for many, many years. That authority went away in 2009 when we became a technical college, so we don't have the ability, like the city or the school district, to invest in ourselves. So everything that we receive from the state and tuition and so forth is very meticulously looked upon for the resources. So, we do have a significant investment in fire science. We have used some of the—it's called HERF money, or CARES Act, or CARISA money—for a lot of our programs, but we feel like there are some resources that we're still—there's still out of our reach on a normal basis. The opportunity, as you well note, Mr. Sprague, they come up very infrequently, 27-year-old vehicle, but, you know, we've got a shop that we can take care of things, or we can use that resource in a way that keeps it within the community and builds in the community. You've obviously seen part of my written requests, but on behalf of our students and future students and our future firefighters in our community, we really think this is a great investment back within the community. It keeps that local source of tax dollars right here. It allows us to do some things that we wouldn't really be able to do. So, if you do have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those, or I can defer to Larry, my counterpart back there.
I do have a question. Could you explain a little bit about how this will be used as far as for teaching and training purposes? And then, I guess, it's a second question, and this may go to someone from the fire department. Is this just a kind of a precursor to attending fire school in Hutchison, if I remember right? If you could answer those or something, please.
So, the first part of that, yes, the training tools—the firefighters need to learn how to use the equipment, so it's a pumper truck, first and foremost. It does have a large ladder, but from my understanding, that ladder is not going to be commissioned—it's out of commission. It'll be on there, but it's not going to be able to be used for training in live action. However, that pumper truck, they all have to use a pump to move the water, to dissipate any fires. So, that part of the training, of course, gearing up, getting on the vehicle, moving the vehicle, being able to operate it, and so forth, that part will be the training. We don't have any other vehicle right now, so we borrow from either the city or the county. Right now, we will take our students off-site. They will go to some of the facilities to use the vehicles that they have. Sometimes that will work very well, and sometimes that will not work very well. A small class, we could probably transport easier, but if we have 10 or 12 in a class, that's going to be a challenge. So, running them through a cycle right there on campus would be really nice to be able to do that. The second part of your question, if you could refresh my memory, the—oh, the technical certificate.
Right, and how that plays into—
Right, the coursework.
I guess, do they still have the fire school in Hutchison that—
Yeah, we have a partnership with the Hutch Community College on the certificate. However, we offer the ability for the student to get certified for fire, and these guys back here know more than I do. So, we have firefighter one and firefighter two. Those are the two that I know you have to go through, and you have to do a fire test at the end of firefighter two to be able to be certified. We also have EMT as a program. So, most of the fire departments are going to want to hire somebody with at least the fire two with the certification, but most want that EMT certification as well. So, having that, they don't have to leave and go to Hutch or any other butler I think has a firefighter service, but we want that for their progression. We want that for their additional training. We also have, in our own future, the hope that this program grows enough that we would offer an associate degree, and so that that could build the firefighters' credentials within the community and the region. Now, you did have another question for—
I think that was—that answered it.
Okay.
Thank you.
And most of what I wanted to find out Commissioner Hoppick asked about, I was actually going to get you just to tout the program. I was just curious if it was designed more towards the mechanical repair and maintenance of the engines or the firefighting, but it obviously is definitely toward firefighting.
Right. We do have a diesel program that would work on the vehicle if need be to maintain it and things like that, so we wouldn't have to go externally. It is a diesel engine, it is a large pump. That's something that our hydraulics would be part of our coursework, so we wouldn't need to go externally to service the vehicle. We have it in-house. That's really what I was referring to in that case. That's a great question, thank you.
Sounds like this would make a great commercial on a Saturday night during a football game.
Absolutely.
You've got a great new program.
Fantastic. Any other questions for Mr. Nichols? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Any other—any questions for—from the commission for staff? Any questions or comments from members of the public? If not, I would bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor, I move we adopt resolution 21-8001, approving the donation of the surplus Quint to the Salina Area Technical College.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the donation of a fire apparatus to the Salina Area Technical College, and I just do want to add my thanks to both Mr. Nichols and Mr. Pankratz for putting this together, as well as the Salina Fire Department personnel, and it's a very easy vote to vote in favor of investing in our future. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes 4-0. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and best of luck to the fire science program. All right, item 7.4.
Item 7.4, approve resolution number 21-7982, reaffirming the Saleen County Solid Waste Management Plan with Addenda.
Thank you. Mr. Kowatch.
Mayor, Commissioners, Jim Kowatch, the Operations Manager for Public Works. Good to see all of you again. We are going to consider—ask you to consider resolutions 21-7982 reaffirming the Solid—Saleen County Solid Waste Management Plan with Addendum. As stated last Sunday, or last—at the last study session, we are required to submit an annual update to our solid waste management plan. It was back in 1994 that the City of Salina and Saleen County entered into an interlocal agreement designating the City of Salina as the Solid Waste Management Planning Authority for Saleen County. So, that is—does fall under the purview of the City of Salina and, as such, the City Typically, we—to do our annual update, we annually submit any changes, relevant changes to our plan, and then every five years, we will not only incorporate those annual changes, but we'll do a thorough review of our plan, look at our progress on our current goals, establish new goals, set performance standards, and have a public hearing re-establishing our 10-year solid waste management plan. And that five-year review will actually occur next year. So, this year is just a standard annual update. We have three items, which are pretty routine in nature. The first two deal with just the establishment of the comprehensive fee schedule for solid waste and sanitation services. The third one was the purchase of our drive-through recycling center, which we felt like was a strong commitment to continue the recycling efforts here in Salina and Saleen County. The fourth addendum was a little bit more unique, and we discussed it at length at the last study session, whereas the Solid Waste Management Committee recommended a goal for the solid waste management plan of producing zero waste by 2050. And the information that we failed to provide at the study session was just what is the definition of zero waste? And that's the problem, there is no single definition. We have provided several examples in the blue sheet for your consideration, as well as provided the link from the EPA that has a collection of these same definitions and the advantages and disadvantages of establishing these kind of goals. So, we've provided you with that information. As it was proposed during the study session, zero waste was undefined by our Solid Waste Management Committee, and that is one step that we think should be considered further or included if you choose to adopt that goal. It was noted at the last study session, the City Commission has the ultimate authority for approval of the annual submittal, and that means either approving the recommendations of the committee, revising those, or moving forward in your own direction. So, we wanted to note that there really is no financial impact to the city or fiscal note. It is a regulatory requirement that we do submit an update annually, and that submittal is due December 4th. So, we'd like to come to some sort of decision tonight on the submittal so that we can remain in compliance with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment. So, with that, we've identified several options for your consideration: approval of the resolution as written, with the proposed changes and addendum by the Solid Waste—Saleen County Solid Waste Management Plan for 2021; reaffirm the Saleen County Solid Waste Management Plan with addendums; postpone approval of this resolution, and provide us with additional information, or not to approve this resolution and give us further guidance. Staff, as previously noted, concerns surrounding uncertainty about establishing a zero-waste goal within the community without further clarification or details. Consequently, staff would defer to the City Commission to select either option one or option two, approval or approval with addendums. And with that, I will stand for questions or further comments.
Any questions for Mr. Kowatch?
Two. One's more question, one's a comment. One's more question, one's a comment. In looking at the actual resolution, the editorial comments after addendum four are not included. And I'm assuming that if the, is it committee or commission?
Committee.
Management, which one?
Committee, I think.
Thank you. If they were seeing far enough down the road to propose zero waste, that they would not have put the hint of a poison pill with that comment under their own suggestion. Who are the comments about the possible negative influences on business?
City staff.
All right, because.
And it was discussed in the solid waste committee, but it was not a formal resolution as far as the submittal of the goal.
And if I could elaborate a little bit, I don't think there was any intent that that get incorporated into the resolution. That was really just us trying to staff through for you as the governing body, a possible, you know, unintended consequence or a concern that we want to be sure that you deliberated on.
See, that's one opinion of that. You know, I see it as a, an inducement to certain types of companies to move here. If we're a type of community that's looking forward in that direction, we're going to probably attract some companies that we wouldn't otherwise. Because communities that are looking forward in that direction usually are moving forward in other areas, you know, with cultural and educational diversity. I mean, it kind of stamps your community as having a certain identity. So I don't see it as a negative. I guess I would rather that had not been put in here. And if we came up with that question, I think there's plenty of specifically vague definitions of zero waste, and I appreciate you putting these in here.
There are many more online if you'd like further discussion or consideration.
And you know, we're giving ourselves a 30-year window. And I think it would be quite appropriate if you just took the first two years to define what we mean by zero waste. We, you know, some of these I like, we may have a hybrid in here, but in 30 years, that's six times to have five-year adjustments to the plan. It's, this is not a restricted plan and it's a goal. It doesn't say we will or else. This is a goal for this community to work towards. I think it's a wonderful idea and I actually, I think, you know, it may be more attractive than a negative as far as business is concerned.
And for what it's worth, I think that is right in the heart of a, I don't know if policy decision is the right way to characterize it, but just a talking point that we wanted you as the governing body to be aware of as you consider, you know, adopting this. Not trying to advocate one way or the other as much as make sure that you aren't caught off guard by.
And I understand that and I appreciate that, but we're not setting any rules, we're not changing any requirements, we're not saying that any business or any person in town can't do this or can't do that as of a certain date. This is just a goal for where we'd like to be. I mean, we really need to have a goal for renewable energy. We need to have goals for water conservation. I mean, there are a lot of goals that we need to have if we plan on continuing this, what we consider a fairly decent lifestyle here. But this just points us in a direction. It doesn't tie us to anything. And again, I think one of these definitions in here says, "or as close as you can get to." If we get to 20%, that's 80% reduction compared to what we have now. So I don't see this as a threatening goal. Actually, I'm quite happy to see it. I mean, I think this identifies this community as moving in a certain direction. And people either think that's a good thing or they don't. Obviously, I think it's a great thing, but I just have one of four votes up here.
Thank you. Questions from the other commissioners?
I don't have questions, I have comments. I'll wait till.
Okay. Commissioner Peck?
Well, I was, I might have to elaborate just a little bit more because I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Davis. I don't, I understand where Commissioner Ryan's comments were coming from when he was on our meeting last week, but I don't think it's a negative. I don't know how many of the businesses that would see this as a positive are necessarily coming to Salina, but I'm fine with your perspective on that and probably tend to agree with you on that. And I understand, I understand your comment about giving us maybe a couple of years to further define this, but I have a hard time, I have a hard time having goals without any sort of teeth or meat to them. It just seems a little bit, it's a noble goal. I would like us to be progressive enough to further lead other communities with policies like this, philosophies like this, but it seems really just open and willy-nilly to me. And especially in the context of, you know, the amount of, the amount of business we receive from other communities coming into our landfill. You know, further defining this into, are we trying to reduce, reduce waste just locally? Are we trying to reduce waste with the other communities that we're receiving waste from? Are we trying to extend the life of the landfill? Or are we doing this for another reason? I just want a little bit more meat.
Well, you know, the meat can be, it's like buying Christmas decorations before you buy the tree. Get the tree first. Then you'll see what type lights look good on that tree, what type bulbs go on that tree. If we look at landfills as money-making devices only, you know, we would encourage, we would have to have people bring us more trash. And, you know, if our goal is to make money off a landfill, then, you know, I guess you build the biggest, deepest one you can. But I would think most of the world's thought is that we're producing more trash than we can handle right now. And it's, you know, everybody who brings us trash is spending money to bring us trash. So I would hope that they would learn from our example. They will spend less money, and we're spending money to take our trash someplace else right now. You know, zero waste doesn't mean just what ends up in the landfill, but even, you know, the stuff that we have to spend money for to send to the recycling center. If there's less of that, we'll save money there. But ultimately, there comes a point where if you make so much less trash, then it makes sense to wind, not wind down as in to phase out, but to narrow the size of a landfill operation. But that's decades out. I mean, where those two lines cross, I couldn't tell you where it is right now. But this is something that a smaller community is probably going to look to us for lead if it's an easy thing to do. You know, start with homes and spread the businesses. Sometimes certain projects go the other way. But it's something we have time to work on. I'm more fearful of where we'll be 30 years from now without a plan like this.
Do you want to take comments of the public? I see.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, definitely. I want to get comments from the public. And Commissioner Ryan did submit an email that when we bring it back to the commission for action and further discussion and comments, I'll read that. He requested that it be read into the record, so I'll do that when we bring it back to the commission. Thank you very much, Mr. Coatch.
You bet.
Questions or comments from members of the public?
Phil Black, Chair of the Solid Waste Committee, and so I guess I don't think of myself as public in this instance. Couple of points for background, the committee, according to state statute, what I have in front of me, could also include the recycling coordinator, if any, which our city ordinance established this does not allow any city employees to be involved at all. So that's kind of weird because you don't really want me writing the plan. I have some limited skills in oratory, but I don't want to write the waste management plan. That said, solid waste committee, solid waste management committee, whether an individual county or regional committee, shall be responsible for the preparation of the solid waste management plan. And that's not an advisory, that's our responsibility. I also wanted to point out, under, I don't, I don't know what section it is, but it, what it says is that, what brought all this to mind was a year ago, we had a discussion about the cost of closing a cell of the landfill. And Commissioner Hoppe, I hope, I'm not picking on you, but you had this sort of sticker shock look on your face when that came up, and there's an additional cost of maintaining it. And that's when I jumped up with this, you know, we're on a solid waste, let us look at this. So one of the points, one of the 10 points that are required in the annual plan is, number nine, establish a schedule for the reduction of waste volumes taken into consideration the following: A, source reduction; B, reuse recycling composting; and C, land disposal. This has not been in the plan as a specific item. And so that was one of the things I brought to this commission a year ago, was that it needed to be in the plan. So in August, when we set up the meeting for, we had a meeting set up for the solid waste committee as the chair, because the city can't be on the committee, the chair and the committee meet to establish the agenda. And I noticed on our solid waste plan, there is nothing in there about the reduction of solid waste or of waste, reduction of waste, no schedule. So I asked, could we not put something in there on the agenda that we would address in August, which would be, let's just get a general target out there, a goal, and then anything we do toward it is toward that goal, which to me would account for having a schedule of reduced waste. Now, in April, we had a workshop where the Director of the Bureau of Waste Management attended, and I think Commissioner Davis was there and Commissioner Hoppe had a conflict. But she said, we're not going to go out and hammer municipalities for not meeting every criteria, but this is part of it. And so I think there's an expectation that we would meet that. Another issue we've been kind of dealing with is staying in good communication. I will have to admit, when we had the study session last week, and I got all sorts of wonderful kudos for the work we did to get the grant, I was absolutely blindsided by the city's position in opposition to this. And we had made this decision clear back in August, and I had heard nothing. And you referred to the blue sheets, I don't know anything about it, I don't know what the options are in front of you. I'm just on the solid waste committee, right? But my point to this is that I want, and we talked out in the hall, I want this to be a collaborative affair. We're giving our time, we get nothing out of this. Even the word solid waste committee, I've always wondered, why couldn't we call it waste management or something, you know? But I'm giving my time to do this, the committee members are giving their time, we've bent over backwards to ensure that the staff, we meet their needs. For example, we have turned down the opportunity to meet at night, which is when several of our committee members have asked to meet, because we know that the staff might have to readjust their schedule or have to be in overtime. And we're not trying to create problems. I know one staff member has childcare issues. So we're trying to make this thing work, but we need to know what's going on. And we had a lengthy discussion about the fact that if anything appears before you relating to solid waste, it would be nice for the solid waste committee to know about it, because we have people ask us questions. So we're not, we're not demanding this be zero. I've said all along, zero to eight, zero to eight, zero to eight. I said it last year, I'll continue saying it. But if you came up with any percentage, that's part of the deliberative process. We're not, it's not one or all or nothing, you know, all or nothing. It's, we'd be happy, as you mentioned, maybe some other percentage would be better. But the goal is to do something about it and to reduce, reduce our waste. And that's part of the plan that we're supposed to do, establish the schedule for the reduction of waste volumes. Increasing is not the same thing. So that's where we are. And I just, we would like to consider being collaborative, we want to work together, we're not out to, you know, take some big political position or anything. We just think this was a solution to that problem, and that's how it came about. So if it's a little bit vague, I apologize.
Do we have a, do we have a policy that's adopted as to how we're to work towards zero waste?
No. In fact, what we were going to do is, we have our next meeting is December 16th, and that was going to be the beginning of the five-year plan where we study for what we're going to do for the next five years. So that was where we intended to really address this in a deeper way.
Yeah, I have a little bit of an issue, as you know, Mr. Black, with, you know, just the blanket reducing to zero waste by 2050. I did read, and I like some of the other cities that have at least have some kind of a background, I do, I do notice that, and the reason I asked about the policy is King County has, they've adopted a policy to work towards zero waste. It almost seems to me like we're putting the cart before the horse here, because I hate in any circumstance, like passing an ordinance that can't be enforced. So I'm not sure how we enforce this without a policy in place.
It's not an ordinance though, right?
No, no, I'm just giving an example. I don't like passing ordinances that you can't really enforce, but yeah. But in this case, we're saying, we want this, but we don't have any steps as to get to that. And again, we know we're not going to get to zero. Are we going to get to eight? Are we going to get to 25? I don't know what that number is. But that zero out there, when you have industries that are in your community and they're never going to hit zero, I don't want that to be a deterrent, so.
Sure, and I completely understand, but it does, it does require, what my hope is that we meet with the stakeholders and that this is, as I mentioned in the study session, that we can get some businesses that are in a position to be able to do this, to help administer this and be the backbone of it, rather than the city. We don't need the city to tell us what we should do or not. It's better if, as a community, we come together and work this out. But we needed to get this into the state, and we need to show that we have a reduction of waste and it simply wasn't there, or scheduled for it. It just wasn't in the plan. So this was kind of a quick solution. Honestly, when we talked about this in the work session with the Director of the Bureau of Waste Management, I thought this was going to be incorporated in the plan. And it honestly surprised me in August to find out it hadn't been. So there we are.
Is there anything that precludes this committee, you know, five years from now, saying, because of the nature of the businesses in Salina, you know, a more realistic goal will be 10% because this segment of our community can't possibly, you know, it technologically looks difficult to get down to zero. I mean, it's, again, we're talking about a goal, and we have a goal for housing, but nobody gets in trouble if we don't build the houses. We have, we have goal, I mean, something to work towards. And, you know, we can define zero as, you know, zero or as close as we can get to zero. I mean, if the word zero bothers you, I mean, there's several other definitions of it in here, but before we, you know, I think we need to give the committee its, you know, marching orders to at least explore this. And one of those, you know, charges may be to come up with a definition of zero waste in the next two years.
And coming out of assessment at the higher education level, my focus and our focus is, as the committee that's responsible for this plan being done, that we establish the schedule for waste reduction. That's, that's the whole thing. If we don't have any goal out there, how much waste do we want to reduce? If you said, we want to reduce it by 25%, at least that gives us something to work toward, and anything that we're doing helps us, that becomes the schedule of the reduction of waste. And that's the, I'm just trying to meet the requirements of the, of the state statute. So, and I wish we could, we could have employees on the committee. I know that's a totally separate issue, but that's yet another thing. But, I mean, because we're the ones that are responsible, we have the least expertise. So that makes it really weird. And I, I've been writing a paper, I'm a college student, so writing a paper on a book called Slow Democracy where it talks about this very thing, the small local communities working together to get things done and people get involved. And one of the things they say is that you should not leave out the community members in the process, but what would be even worse is if you include them and then ignore them. So, you know, we don't mind putting the time in, we don't mind giving up our time to do this stuff, but we'd like to know that, first of all, we'd like to not be surprised, but also that we're being heard.
I think the solid waste characterization study would probably give additional information, which would help ingest the characterization.
The what study? I'm sorry?
The solid waste, I have the right name?
Characterization.
Characterization study, that, could call it.
Oh, right, right. The one that we wrote the grant. Yeah, yeah. Wrote a nice grant for that. So, yeah, that, and that's, see, that's one of the steps we need to do. We need to figure out what's going in there. And if we say we have this goal out here and here's what we're doing, that will meet the criteria. I'm not worried about that at that point. But I think there is an expectation on the part of the KDHD that we have at least some schedule in there.
Yeah, I was going to make that point, that you may recall from the study session conversation that admittedly, this has been an ongoing struggle for this committee and staff to kind of get to the level of detail that we're talking about. And we've had open, broader, open-ended conversations about initiatives and what we're seeing occur in individual communities. we're seeing occur in individual communities nationwide. And so, the study session presentation provided a path forward that started with the waste characterization study, so we could truly kind of dial in on, where are our big waste generators, and how, do we have an opportunity to tackle them? You know, we might get to percentages, but even if we don't get to percentages, I think we can get to an identification of waste that could be composted, waste that could be avoided, going into the landfill, those type of things. The other thing I would, would offer is, just in terms of staff being on the committee, we, there's plenty of examples where staff are not on a committee, they provide staff support and professional support to the committee, and we, that's the role that we're trying to, you know, administer here. And then lastly, I, I do think, if you as a governing body are open to it, there might be a way to, to turn this more into a directive to pursue a, a more specific reduction goal slash percentage, and/or administer a waste characterization study and use that to develop a goal in the coming year, more so than, if that's acceptable to you as a governing body, versus just kind of picking a, the zero waste as a goal.
If we were to pass this this year with this verbiage, and came in and changed it next year, is there an issue with that?
No, I don't think so, from, and I need to, I need to make sure Jim Toich doesn't, agrees, but I, no, I don't think there's, other than kind of backing away from that stated goal.
I believe it needs to be defined different, I mean, I like the, whatever Zero Waste International Alliance is, I mean, I like their, at least they define zero waste, and it's not zero, it just talks about the conservation and da-da-da-da-da. And I think that's, it's, you talk about, well, it leaves it wide open, but it's, it's not setting a goal there that I'm not sure is attainable.
You could even say, we want to set it to, to the international standard or something, and you leave out the numbers at that, for that matter.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was just, I was just going to ask, and what Mr. Scragg had, had mentioned, if this is something that we can adapt and adjust each year, obviously, we don't want to make huge changes, but maybe since we're kind of waiting on the waste characterization study results, that for this particular year, for this particular report, that rather than we go to a goal of solid waste management plan of producing zero waste by 2050, that we incorporate something like, on the completion of the waste characterization study, we establish a waste reduction plan and goals, or something like that, in, in the next year, so that we can incorporate that.
Well, of course, I'm just, I'm one person on the committee.
Right, right.
But I could imagine saying, we, that this is the first step in a waste reduction plan, is this study.
Right.
And even if you did that, that, and that, here's the schedule for getting that done, you could say that's the first step in an, in an unknown series of steps ahead. I, I think the committee would be okay with that, we just want to make sure we get step nine on the.
Was, did I miss something last week? Did we, did we discuss that this was a statutory requirement of having some sort of schedule?
Yeah, I went back on the, the study session information, and I haven't dialed into that, but I'm pretty sure we, we kind of had an articulation of a handful of requirements out of the state statute.
I asked specifically about our deadline.
I don't remember that specific thing.
Because we've run up against this in the past, where it's like, something comes to us, and it's like, well, we have to make it, we have to figure this out right now, because as soon as we leave the meeting, staff's going to fax it into the state or whatever. So, I, I know we had, we at least had a discussion about the due date of, of this particular item statutorily, and I don't recall what that was, but wasn't it, did you say December 1st?
Fourth, I believe.
Oh, yeah, yeah, when, when it's supposed to be in.
Well, I mean, but, but the specific requirement about having a schedule of reducing waste.
Establish the schedule for the reduction of waste.
I would like to ask Jim Toich to come forward and speak to that. The, kind of historically, and I think the thing that we continue to overlook is, this is supposed to be a Saline County plan, or even a regional plan. We, as the operators of the landfill, were, by way of inter-local agreement, became the administrators of that plan. And I, I think we've continued to find ourselves inward focusing to Salina and our sanitation operations and our landfill operations, and overlooking that, as a, as a recommending body, whatever we do should, should apply countywide. And so, that, you know, that's a consideration that could have impacts that we, we often overlook.
How does that affect us, because I believe it was Commissioner Peck asked last week for the number of counties that, that bring stuff in here, and I think he alluded to that earlier. You know, we can do all we want, but if surrounding counties, you know, we're, we're bringing their, their waste.
I just would like to point out that our committee is required to have a certain number of people from outside the city, but within the county. But, there's no requirement of us having people from other counties. So, that's, that's part of the city ordinance, as well as, and it aligns with the state.
Yeah, we try to anticipate stakeholders beyond just the city, in the makeup of the committee.
Sure, but where's the line?
Yeah.
I mean, at some point, you gotta, you gotta, we gotta, we gotta get this thing filed, and we have continually filed it without that part in there. The Director of the Bureau of Waste Management now knows it wasn't in there, and said she would expect to see that in there, in our meeting. And, and by the way, I don't recall anything in our meeting in August where somebody was worried about the, the business problems, that we had several issues, one was that we are a, an advisory group or not, and one was that we not do it for 30 years, but instead do it for 2050, and one was, how does this affect the landfill? So, I don't, I don't recall anything about that, but, so that's why I was surprised by all this, but Mr. Toich, I think, wants to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Do you have anything for me? And I can come back up if you need. Thank you, appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, I'm just standing in response to wanting to answer whatever questions you might have regarding this subject.
I think the question was statutorily, the requirement for a stated goal, and how specific that might be.
No requirement for a stated goal, but, um, getting to the heart of the purpose of the solid waste management plan, and, and staff's process in, in meeting the requirements of the state. I, I've mentioned previously that we felt strongly that we needed an accurate, up-to-date, current waste characterization study. As business and industry change in Salina, so does our waste. And for us to develop a, a usable, workable plan that we can actually get actionable items from, we have to have the most updated information that we can. And that would start with the waste characterization study. If you recall, the next step in this process is to develop waste reduction strategies. I would, I would, I, I don't want to at all sound in disagreement, I actually support the idea of creating a goal. I've stood in front of this body on, on several occasions and requested that we have a goal, because it, it helps us to be able to, if there is a, if there is a percentage, that, whatever that percentage is, whether it's 10%, 20%, 80%, or zero waste, as it's described here, that tells us, in whatever timeframe we have, it, it sort of helps us define what we need to do, and how, how much effort we need to put against this particular subject, and what is going to be the payoff for that, that particular type of waste. In terms of the plan itself, the, I, I just think that there's a difference in the idea of what makes a schedule. The, the way I will tell you that it's ran quite successfully with the Saline County Solid Waste Management Plan and the KDHD, and would continue to do so as it currently is, is that it is a 10-year plan renewed every five years. So, we select goals that we can accomplish within that five years. The 10-year planning period is the schedule. So, we, we, we have viewed our role as select goals that we can solve within the 10-year plan. That is not to say that we could not do this and, and revise it, but the, and, and if, if there was any idea that I was opposed to this, it's, it's mistaken, it's just that it's, it's very important, I had a KDHD regulator ask me today, why, what do I think the reason is that Salina's solid waste system is so progressive? So, it's, it's actually an internal view that we are not leaning forward enough, or not, or not progressive, because the state certainly doesn't view us that way. But, once we get the waste characterization study, we have data, that enables our E3 coordinator to reach out to industries that, that we think might be the source of that waste, or if there is a, a messaging, or a, a system improvement that we need to put in place in Salina, whether that's satellite collection, or whatever, whatever that turns out to be, we will not know that answer until after the waste characterization study is done, and we do waste reduction strategies. Once we have waste reduction strategies based on the data from the waste characterization study, I think the, the, the goals will, they, they'll tell us what percentages we could reasonably expect to, to, to achieve, within whatever period of time you want us to look at. If you want us to look at beyond the, the 10-year planning period, we certainly can do that, or, or we could, we could do it the way we're doing it now. I, I do think that any one of these examples could work, and, and staff is certainly ready to support whatever way we can.
Jim, can you speak to the timing of the waste characterization study, when, when we think it'll start and finish, and then getting through the rest of that process, when we might think we can reach some conclusions?
So, we literally started the waste characterization study this morning. Fortunately, all of our volunteers showed up, the landfill engineering consultants showed up, and several members of the KDHD showed up, and they will be coming back tomorrow, they just want to watch the data collection process, so they have an idea of how to do this, because they want to try to encourage other management authorities to adopt this methodology, waste characterization study, waste reduction strategies, goal setting, and then implementing those goals within whatever period of time it is. So, they will, they're, today, we started the waste, and they, their, their goal by the end of the day was to collect 10 samples, they're going to do that for the next five days, so there will be 50 waste samples taken. When I left earlier today, they were on schedule, so I have no, no reason to think that they won't achieve that daily, and then for the whole week. Starting tomorrow, they will begin the recyclables composition study. We've already put the, we already have a, the load of recyclables at the, the building where we are doing this, so first thing in the morning, we're going to have a team that does the, the waste sorting, and we will have another team that does the recyclables sorting. I would expect that, the, the entire waste characterization study would wrap up this week, we expect to have the results of the waste characterization study before year's end. And we are recommending that we implement the waste reduction strategies as part of the next landfill engineering consultant contract, and start implementing those strategies beginning next year. So, in terms of timeline, we should have the data by the end of the year, and, and with the goal to take the next step in this process in 2022.
So, not to dominate the conversation, but Jim referenced that there's a perception that we're forward-leaning outside of our own organization, and I, I was the one that raised the concern about the zero waste goal, using the same analogy, because I was a little worried we were out over the tips of our skis, and I just wanted you as a governing body to be aware of that, before you just kind of process, I didn't want you to just process the recommendation somewhat sight unseen, or not taking that into account. I do think.
I kind of have a problem with that, though, I do. I mean, something that, that Commissioner Davis alluded to earlier, is the, it, like it or not, every week when we get the blue sheet, staff is able to frame the narrative on every issue, it's not just, it's not solid waste, it's, it's, it's every issue that we look at. Word choice matters, and the minute that you attach the word negative to something, I think that it's understood, at least it is by me, that it represents a point of view. And I'm looking at every other member on the commission, and of course, Commissioner Ryan isn't here, but I'll include him in that as well, is that we, I haven't seen any evidence that we don't do our homework, that we lack any particular analytical skills in terms of being able to, you know, look somewhat down the line and see what the reverberations of, of, of a particular decision that we have made. And I feel like, in terms of this specific issue, rather than just, you know, supporting the solid waste management committee's recommendation, we've really framed the narrative in terms of a, an us versus them mentality. And I'm, I'm, I'm just making, there's no need to respond, but it really, the editorial comments, like it or not, subconsciously or not, we read through them, and, and, and we absorb them. And it's, 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 it's just a little bit disappointing when you combine that with, from what I understand from hearing from Mr. Black, is the, the committee also not being apprised as to when things are coming before the commission, so that they can speak to their body of work. I mean, obviously, their committee representatives have put in the time, and have enough of a passion to volunteer to be on this board, and to donate their time. And it's, 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 it's just, I don't know, it's just a disappointment to, to me personally. But, that being said, are there any other questions for staff at this point?
Questions, no.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments from other members of the public?
Dalton McDowell, City of Salina, I go out to the landfill quite a bit. I'd like to see us start recycling a lot of our green waste, our green waste goes into the pits, so it goes into the cells, they're not recycling it. Our, the wood piles are out there extremely, a nightmare to deal with. Can we not start a green waste disposal site? They had a perfect site out there for it. Abilene does it. It's just, it's just ridiculous, in my opinion, that we don't, that a smaller town the size of Abilene is doing their recycling, their, even their household recycling, industrial recycling, a lot better than the City of Salina. The recycling center that the city has, I think it's kind of ridiculous, you, why, if we're going to use a trash truck anyways, why don't you guys pick it up at the street corner? It's going, you have to put it in a trash truck anyways, it might as well be put, they might as well pick it up and haul it there to Hutch, because the trucks are still running. Every time, when the recycling centers open, the trucks have to run, to run the compactor. We're wait, we're, we're putting a lot of damaging fumes into the atmosphere from all these trucks running, we're wasting a bunch of money hauling this, this recycling to Hutchinson, I believe we're paying 60 or 80 dollars or something a ton, or more than that, I'm not, I don't know how much, to be honest with you. But I think it's kind of stupid that we're not trying to do a lot more of this in-house. The green waste is, the green waste is one deal. All the leaves the city collects used to go to Kansas, I don't know what happened with that, I can just imagine. But now it's going into the pits and being buried, it does no good. It's, it's great compost. There's a company out of, there's a company out of, out of Florida that I've had the opportunity to talk with the owner several times, he goes around, he goes around, does storm cleanups, they grind it up, they sell it. I've even bought some of their product. Very decent company to deal with, why don't we try to do something similar to that?
One last thing, I want to make sure that you understand that the committee does not disparage what the city's. city staff are doing in terms of their waste management. I think they have a, they've done a good job out there, they're having to deal with mitigating methane and those kinds of things, and the more I get into it, ooh, the more complicated it is. So, I don't want you to be left with the impression that we are in an adversarial position with them at all. They've been very supportive of the staff, so, okay?
Very much. Appreciate it.
Norman Lannan Sloman, they just got done with the World Conference on Global Warming. Man is the one that's causing these problems. And until we reduce the population, it's not going to stop. Because everything we use, we put into the air. Electric vehicles are not going to work. We're going to have to stop consuming and using all this stuff. It's going to be painful. But we were warned about this about 150 years ago, when all the trees are cut down and gone, when all the animals are killed off and gone, when the water is undrinkable, the air is unbreathable. Only then will the white man realize the error of his ways. You can't eat money. It's all about money.
Is there anyone else here in the room that would like to speak to this issue? And if not, I will turn to the virtual. I see that we have a hand raised, and Mr. Longbine, I would ask that staff unmute you, and you're unmuted, so please go ahead.
Hi, Bill Longbine, Salina. I've had a fair amount of experience with my previous employer, Phillips Lighting. Zero-waste, it was driven by European standards, and a lot was accomplished in, over a 10-year period. But the zero-waste in an actual landfill kind of defeats the purpose of a landfill. And I think that the terminology needs to be redefined, because is the goal to put the landfill out of business? It was brought up about our local industries doing their part and having a lot of waste streams, and I can assure you that most of your local industries are going to do everything they can to recycle what they can, in terms of easily recyclables, metals, carboards, plastics. But, zero-waste in the landfill is just stretching it. You know, as was mentioned before, the green waste, we had a good program going on with yard waste, and that kind of fell apart, mainly due to labor problems. And many people were upset about that, that it was discontinued. So there's no easy answers. I don't know how the city can expect to have a sort of recyclables at the landfill when we can't even do the yard waste. So, I think the zero-waste term needs to be redefined. That's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else online who would like to be recognized? If so, raise your virtual hand, and you'll be unmuted. I don't think I see anyone else. Nope. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. All right. With that, I will bring it back to the commission for further discussion or action. And, like I said, Commissioner Ryan did have a statement that he wanted to share with his fellow commissioners and have it read into the record. So, I am reading this on behalf of Commissioner Ryan, who is unable to be at the meeting today. In his email addressed to Mr. Schreg, he says, "Dear Mike, let me go on record in the discussion of the solid waste management plan that I oppose a specific referral to a 2050 neutral or zero goal. Any referral to this goal, in my mind, whether it is stamped at the top of the document or found deep in the document somewhere, will brand it as a defining goal that I believe could become poorly perceived by industry and future development. It is certainly a worthy goal, but if written down, it will percolate with ever-changing staff leaders and ever-changing future commissioners to be politicized as they feel inclined. I would prefer staffs and commissions to make their own best decisions at the time they need to be made, and I feel confident and trust that they will do so in the direction of the discussed 2050 goal. It is wrong to me, and not in the best benefit of the taxpayers, to try and define a future that will undoubtedly, undoubtedly hold many unpredictable possibilities and options." If I don't get to vote, maybe this could be read into the record. Thank you. Signed, Carl F. Ryan. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have, somehow, I was hoping Commissioner Ryan would be listening, even if he's not I think it's very easy to define our future if we don't start making steps to preserve our natural resources and protect our environment. I mean, I don't know how many more dire warnings we need, but some places are trying to get it, but unless, you know, the world gets it as a whole, you know, what is produced on one side of the globe is going to affect someone on the other side. I don't like using our current limitations to define what we think we can do in the future. If we don't have the knowledge or the technology to achieve a goal, then we need to invent it, we need to study it and see how close we can get to it. The landfill is, you know, should be the last place we put stuff. You know, some people can get their trash down to one bag a week, one bag every two weeks. Some households put out six bags a day. And it just depends, you know, that's influenced by what they buy to begin with, what's wasted and has to be thrown away, what could be recycled and reused. So this is not just a landfill focus. Now, if we stretch our landfill and put less stuff in, it may last 500 years. Would that require some financial adjustments along the way? Absolutely. But it's not going to be this year, it's not going to be in the next five or 10 years. Part, and if you look at the Zero-Waste International Alliance definition of zero-waste, it's the conservation of all resources by means of responsible production, consumption, reuse, and recovery of products, packaging, and materials. If you look at the Solid Waste Association of North America, efforts to reduce solid waste generation, waste to nothing, or as close to nothing as possible, by minimizing excess consumption and maximizing the recovery. Now, a lot of this is education. A lot of it is consumer will, which does influence how manufacturers produce their products. But right now, we're sitting out in the middle of a lake, no paddle, we're not trying to get to any shore anywhere. It's business as usual as far as production of trash and what we do with it. And if, you know, if this is something that's important to our community, we need to move in a direction. If you want to substitute zero-waste for either of those two definitions, and give this committee two, three years to come back with what will be our definition of waste reduction. If the word "zero" bothers you, that's fine, you know, I mean, in civil rights legislation, we say no discrimination, no this. Well, if we held to the "no," there'd be a lot of frustrated people in the world. But if we can reduce it, let's get rid of 95% of the discrimination in the world. Be a pretty good world, you know? Don't get hung up on the "zero." But we have to have a goal to work towards, and the definition probably will change over a 30-year period. Products are going to change, our population's going to change, industry, I hope, doesn't change too, too much, unless we get new ones in. But we can, we have the ability to redefine that. But I think we need to move in a particular direction, and this is about as non-threatening a first step as I think we could possibly come up with. Thank you.
That's probably fair enough. I probably agree with that. I, like I said earlier, I typically like something that you can stand behind, that has some bones to it, but philosophically, if this is a direction for us to head, then it's better than sitting on the sidelines and doing nothing, and we can continue to kind of mold this and develop it in the coming years, but, yeah.
I do like some of the other definitions better. I mean, they say zero-waste, but then they describe something that's not quite as, how do, I don't know what word I want to use, but so-
Rigid.
Rigid? It's a good word. I wish we had a different definition for it, and then I do believe that, you know, without an adopted policy to reach those goals is also at this point. So hopefully, we would have something, I guess, after we get the waste management, or the, what do I want to call it, the waste characterization study, we can work towards that, so.
You know, actually, if you take the first paragraph of the Pasadena definition, they state it's the philosophy and design framework that promotes reuse, et cetera, et cetera. And then you combine that, you know, to reduce waste to nothing, or as close to nothing, by minimizing excess consumption. I mean, it's a process, and it de-emphasizes the focus on zero. I mean, unless we become better physicists than the folks at Caltech, there's always going to be some debris left over, when you look at the crude stuff that we use.
Yeah, I do think those definitions are less threatening and more, have a softer tone to them. I guess I do like those better. I just have a real problem with zero, 2050. It just, I just think it, not that you don't hope to reach that, we know we're not going to reach zero, but I would, I would-
And if we don't reach it in 2050, by then we'll probably know where we are along that continuum and say, eh, you know, we need 10 more years. I mean, wouldn't be the first project, we've extended for several years.
And, I would concur with everything that's been said here in terms of, the zero-waste may be a triggering term for people, but if you look at it, I mean, any of these definitions, maximizing diversion from landfills and reducing waste at the source with the ultimate goal of striving for more sustainable solid waste management practices, I mean, that's pretty hard to disagree with that. So, if it would be reassuring to incorporate any part of, any of these definitions in the, as an addendum to what we mean by zero-waste, that's fine. I'm also fine just leaving it with zero-waste and asking the solid waste management committee to work with staff and come up with, what is the best definition for Salina? And with that-
That could be their first charge, come back in a year? When is the five-year meeting again?
December 16.
Oh, that'd be a little soon. Okay. Maybe in a year. I mean, we're not going to fix this in a year. I mean, I, the-
If, what if, what if we left the verbiage in there, the solid waste management committee recommended a goal for the solid waste management plan of producing zero-waste by 2050, and then I think you're, to put a definition behind that, never thought I'd agree with anything that came out of California, but perhaps Pasadena's zero-waste is a philosophy and design framework, which would give solid waste committee then the opportunity to create that framework, that promotes not only reuse, recycling, and conservation programs, but also, and more importantly, emphasizes sustainability by considering the entire life cycle of products, processes, and systems. So-
Yep. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
If I could, I'm trying to offer a little bit of clarification there. As we, as I was looking at that as well, I don't know that we, in addendum four, I don't know that we need to call out the solid waste management committee. The whole point is, you're adopting this as our solid waste management plan, I'm not trying to make a distinction between the committee and you. So I think that the heading can probably be solid waste management plan goal, and then something along the lines of what Commissioner Hoppe just articulated, is that, subpoint under that heading.
So, but this would just be option two, with an addendum adding the paragraph?
Yeah. So, under item four, the solid waste management committee recommended a goal for the solid waste management plan of producing zero-waste by 2050, as defined as a philosophy and design framework that promotes not only reuse, recycling, and conservation programs, but also, and more importantly, emphasizes sustainability by considering the entire life cycle of products, processes, and systems. Is that what we were thinking?
Yeah, I think that works. If I understood what you're trying to accomplish there, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I understood. That's what I understood you to mean.
Yeah, I think that softens it some, and gives the solid waste management kind of direction on, kind of word ahead.
Okay, right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion passes 4-0. Item 8.1.
Item 8.1, approve a sidewalk cafe license agreement with Wheat State One LLC authorizing an outdoor dining area established on Campbell Plaza adjacent to the Prickly Pear Grill and Cantina Restaurant.
All right, Mr. Andrew.
Just for clarification purposes, there's two entities. There's an ownership entity and a restaurant operating entity. So the sidewalk cafe license agreement that's under consideration would be with Wheat State Hospitality Incorporated. Wheat State One is the owner of the property. Our current policies for sidewalk dining and plaza dining in the central business district date back to 2014, when the city commission adopted an ordinance and also adopted some supplemental design guidelines for sidewalk dining areas. That all occurred in June of 2014, but it wasn't really until work began on the Streetscape project that downtown businesses felt comfortable trying to make improvements on the sidewalks. So most of the cafe license agreements that you've approved have been recently approved, and in 2020, you went back and amended the sidewalk dining design guidelines to reduce the width of unobstructed walkway required adjacent to a sidewalk from six feet to five feet. So that was the most recent action that the commission has taken. The application before you tonight is an application requesting approval of a sidewalk cafe license agreement to locate a 42-foot by 117-foot outdoor dining recreation area that would be adjacent to the south facade of the Prickly Pear Grill and Cantina Restaurant building. And the dining area would be separated from an open public walkway across the plaza by a three-foot-tall metal fence. That plaza dining area would contain tables, chairs, and open recreation areas. So this is, what's happening in Campbell Plaza is a multifaceted project. The downtown design review board has kept very busy reviewing different aspects of it. So just to summarize, the Prickly Pear Restaurant would be located in a building that's addressed as 123 South Santa Fe. The first floor would have 1,046 square feet of dining area with 61 seats. The second floor has 1,400 square feet of dining area with 82 seats. There's a plan to add a fire escape at the southeast end of the building to provide an emergency exit from the second floor. Campbell Plaza is 50 by 120 feet in size. The plan is to create a fenced-in area that's 42 feet wide, 117 feet deep, so it would contain 4,322 square feet dedicated to dining and recreation. The outdoor recreation area would also feature a 21-foot by 37-foot-deep artificial turf activity area. The aspects of the project include disassembly and removal of the Campbell Plaza stage that has occurred, as you have seen. It also involves the construction of a new, smaller, 20-foot-wide-by-17-foot stage at the east end of the plaza, and it would involve- And it would involve the construction of a fence to create a public pedestrian pathway on the south eight feet of the Campbell Plaza. And this fence would consist of powder-coated painted steel tube frame and posts with stainless steel cable rails. Another aspect reviewed by the Downtown Design Review Board are exterior modifications to the south facade of the building that abuts Campbell Plaza. So all those things have been reviewed at this point by the Downtown Design Review Board. They also conducted a hearing on this request to have a Sidewalk Cafe License Agreement. And so as I noted, the fenced-in area that would be available for dining and recreation contains 40, it's 42 feet wide by 117 feet deep. If you take out the stage and the artificial turf area, that reviews the actual dining area to 3,200 square feet. The plan submitted by the applicant, reviewed by the Design Review Board, shows nine square tables with four chairs each. Three of those tables would have umbrellas that are symbolized by the the round circles there. There's also four rectangular picnic tables shown on the plan. And three of those would be in front of the stage. And then there's a number of Adirondack chairs that would be available within the plaza. Obviously, this dining area exceeds the 200-square-foot maximum in the sidewalk dining ordinance, and you would need to authorize an size exception as part of this agreement. As we noted, I think we have some graphics there, Dustin, about the fence and the fence material, but the plan is to have a three-foot tall fence. And that would separate the walkway and would also go around the other sides of the dining area. It would be a painted steel tube frame with posts and stainless steel cable rails. It would leave open an eight-foot path that you see there on the south end of the plaza. The applicant has provided you with some photo simulations of the proposed tables and chairs, the Adirondack chairs, benches and picnic table size or styles. We wanted to emphasize that due to questions about supply availability, we don't have specific products or specific catalog cut sheets, but the applicant has indicated that the plaza furniture will be composite of faux wood material that's rated for all-weather, all-season use. There's a plan to install overhead LED string lighting over the plaza. Our sidewalk dining ordinance, and this would apply to most of the ones that are actually on the sidewalks downtown, they require that any music conform to the sidewalk dining standards and not be plainly audible by an average person from a distance of 50 feet from the source of the noise. Obviously, application of this would not be consistent with the plan to use this as public space and to have performances on the new stage, which is shown in some of these illustrations. So that would also be an exception that you would need to consider as part of this request. At this time, there's no plan for any kind of wall-mounted or mobile heating devices. That might be something that would come up later, but at this plan, there's no plan for any heating devices. There is a proposal, and I think we saw it in one of the illustrations, to install a sign identifying Campbell Plaza at the west entrance. We would note that Sidewalk Cafe License Agreements are required to be renewed. This one would run till May 1st and then one year after that, May 1st date, and then it would be subject to being renewed after that. And the Downtown Design Review Board would review each application for renewal and review for compliance with any conditions that are established. This application was reviewed by the Downtown Design Review Board on September 30th. They voted three to zero to recommend approval of the application and the plans. In terms of the agreement itself, it doesn't involve any compensation to the city, but Wheat State Hospitality Incorporated would be responsible for general cleaning and routine maintenance of the plaza under this License Agreement. I'd also point out that there is another License Agreement that this body approved on September 17th. And this License Agreement that's before you makes reference to that and incorporates those provisions by reference into this. If you could go back to the site plan, please, Dustin, would just point out one thing that was, it's not, we didn't, staff did not think it was best addressed in this agreement and would need to be addressed separately, but similar to the Barolo Grill, there's a plan to put grease interceptor out in that planter in the public space, similar to what was done in the Barolo Grill. And staff's ideas that we would bring that back to you for consideration of that location separately. Since this is a renewable agreement and that's a permanent installation, it didn't seem like it fit within this agreement. So we've identified on page eight, three options for you this evening. The first one is rather lengthy, but your first option would be to approve a motion that would authorize the city manager to execute a Sidewalk Cafe License Agreement with Wheat State Hospitality. That would allow the placement of a sidewalk dining area on Campbell Plaza. And it would include the exceptions to the dining area size and the amplified sound limitations that are generally applicable to sidewalk dining areas. And it would make this area subject to the provisions of the already existing License Agreement which deal with public access, hours of operation and Salina Downtown Inc.'s programming on the plaza and stage. We did attach that previous agreement to your packet, so you could refer back to that. Your other option would be to return this application to the Design Review Board for further consideration, together with a statement specifying the basis for you returning it. Or you could decline to approve the Sidewalk Cafe License Agreement with Wheat State Hospitality and provide further direction to the applicant and staff. We had a lot of exhibits and renderings that we attached to our report. We thought it would be helpful to have those available on the screen. So if there's any questions you have or any illustration that you'd like to refer back to, please let us know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Andrew. Questions for staff?
Just one, just for stage venues downtown, even the old Campbell Plaza, what what governs the loudness and time, how late noise can be?
Well, we have a general disturbing the peace ordinance that would apply to the the stage, the relocated stage at the parking lot. What's distinct about this is that there were special rules that were drafted for the sidewalk dining areas generally, which are smaller and actually on the sidewalk, like what's in front of Martinelli's. So this is a really unique proposal, and so it doesn't fit neatly into that same category because of the presence of the stage and the public programming.
So what would govern it, it would be governed the same way?
It would be governed the same way by disturbing the peace, which would apply to the stage at Oakdale Park or anywhere else.
Any other questions for staff?
I guess my question would maybe be for the applicant as far as the recreation area. What is that going to be used for? Just out of curiosity.
Yep, absolutely. Well, we've modeled this concept after several, several similar sites that we've visited, just simple yard games, an area to gather, just something nice for downtown.
Like cornhole and that type of stuff?
Perfect, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, that's what I envisioned, but.
Yeah, just real quickly, Mr. Blake, timeline on construction. I mean, that's always the big question on everyone's mind. What are?
We're going as fast as we can. I'm in discussion with their contractor. I believe the building permit was just done some 10 days ago, so we're finally permitted. We've had folks on-site every day, and I know they've made, they're ahead of schedule with the finish of the plaza. The walkway is already temporarily fenced in. We've got brick that goes up on the facade this week, and so knock on wood, we're ahead of the weather a little bit here and can, we, right now, if you had to ask me today, we're looking at a March 1st open date.
March 1st, you said? Oh, wow, okay, great, yeah.
We're going as fast as we can. It's pending, we run into lead time issues on a number of things, but that's where we're targeting right now.
See in July.
Maybe.
That's not funny.
It is what it is.
Any other questions for Mr. Blake? Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any questions or comments from members of the public?
Dalton McDowell, City of Salina. It is getting, it is starting to fill up down there. I think they're, I think we're doing pretty good. We still have some other buildings down on Santa Fe that personally I'd like to see not go to waste. Some of the older buildings, something come into them, especially on the other side of, between Elm and Pacific, there's not very much incorporated down in that area, but we are doing pretty good with this project.
Any other questions or comments from members of the public? And I see that we have one virtual comment. Mr. Longbine, we'll go ahead and unmute you and.
Hi, Bill Longbine, Salina. As I read through this, my question is, it appears this property is being donated to the developer in return for them improving and developing. My concern is how does that make it fair to the next restaurant down the street that they are receiving 3,200 square feet of restaurant space compliments of the city? Can someone explain that?
Don't think that's correct. I'll turn to the city staff, so I don't misspeak, but.
Certainly understand the appearance of that. The way this is set up is a License Agreement, and by that we mean we have agreed upon terms on which they can use the space. Ownership doesn't transfer, ownership is retained by the city. And as long as they use it in the agreed-upon manner, they have access to it. In the event that they don't, or in the event that we determine that a better, higher and better public use is out there, we could terminate that agreement. And then the other point I think that's worth making is this particular area is not exclusively limited to private use. Part of the conversation and part of what we incorporated into the agreement was that it would be accessible by the general public. So admittedly, I think more often than not, people are going to be customers of the restaurant using the space, but the hypothetical that we included in the conversation is someone could pick up a Subway sandwich for lunch and go down and choose to enter the space from the sidewalk and use that space. So, there was a lot of deliberation, however, along, the initial request was that it be donated. There was a lot of deliberation about that. There was very clear response from the governing body that because of the concerns you raised, there wasn't a level of comfort to do that. So this is the alternative approach that ultimately got worked out and approved.
So this will still be considered public space?
Number one, yeah, it'll stay under city ownership. Number two, it is not exclusively limited to customers of the restaurant. It would also be open to the public. And then I guess the other thing I would add is there were conversations as well about programming of the stage and an acknowledgement that while they, while the Prickly Pear would try to program it to have activities on the stage, there would be a coordination aspect with Salina Downtown Inc. to schedule it for public use, or to kind of have a predetermined schedule from the Prickly Pear, and then any other dates that were available could be available to the public. I'm speculating now, but one thing that has kind of occurred to me is we transitioned the Campbell Plaza structure to the intersection of Santa Fe and Ash Street is I think that location now has a larger feel to it than I might have anticipated. So I don't know, I'm speculating, but I think there could be events that want to happen in the downtown may gravitate to that Ad Astra stage more so than the Campbell Plaza location. But nonetheless, the Campbell Plaza stage would be available to the public as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Longbine. Any other questions, comments from the public? Not, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hodges, I move that we authorize the city manager to execute a Sidewalk Cafe License Agreement with Wheat State Hospitality, Inc. to allow the placement of a sidewalk dining area on Campbell Plaza adjacent to the Prickly Pear Grill in Cantina at 123 South Santa Fe Avenue, including the exceptions to the dining area size and amplified sound limitations applicable to sidewalk dining areas and subject to the provisions of the existing License Agreement for public-private use of Campbell Plaza dated September 17th, 2021, which address public access, hours of operation and Salina Downtown Inc.'s programming on the plaza and stage.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes four zero. Other business?
One question, just Mr. Torres, is it possible for the trucks at the downtown recycling center to run on electricity to compress the trash while they're inside the building as opposed to running on diesel?
Yeah, I guess that is something that needs to be clarified. First, the trucks do not run all the time. They run when they need to compact the trash and then they shut them off. So I guess that's the first thing. And the question was, could we use electric trucks?
I don't know if there's a way to like tap into the system on the truck to run.
Oh, to do electric hydraulic. Yeah, the, generally speaking, electric hydraulic is not going to have the same compression rate. So it would probably result in somewhat less compacted trash, but it's something that we could look into, certainly.
Right, and just knowing that they're not running all the time is probably.
When it's, I can understand how people see that, though, when it's very busy and we have cars lined out on the street. They're compacting the trash quite often, so that they'll keep the truck running during that period. But yeah, they do not run all the time.
Electric vehicles are an element of the recently passed infrastructure bill. I don't know that it's targeted trash collection as much as public transit and then charging stations, but there might be an opportunity for us to try to tap into some of those funds for our fleet to convert to electric.
I've expressed several times to the commission that, you know, it is my goal that if and when we get to capture landfill gas, converting that to a usable resource and powering my sanitation trucks using landfill gas. So that's another option as well. Thank you.
My, I had one other thing under the, Commissioner Davis, did you have anything else?
I'm done.
With the, and I don't know, did the infrastructure bill get signed, I guess, if it was supposed to be? Anyway, based on the fact that it does appear that the infrastructure bill is going to be passed, have, I'm looking at the city staff, have we discussed kind of being proactive instead of reactive on some of the dollars that can be used in the community? And I do believe, do we have someone that's kind of a grant writer now, or didn't we hire somebody to help us?
Yeah, one of the, you know, you may recall, we had an opportunity to apply for a fellows program to fund.
And our fellow is a gal, right?
Correct.
Okay, that's right.
So we actually secured two. One is oriented towards housing and assisting Lauren Driscoll to identify housing strategies and options. The other one is grant and at the time, American Rescue Plan funding oriented and being supervised by the deputy city manager. So we've been looking into those funding cycles and those opportunities directed more so at the American Rescue Plan and then the State Spark Plan, but with this infrastructure bill passing, it rolls right into that as well.
Because I know it was brought up earlier, we have some old pipes in North Salina that it would be nice if we could use some of the infrastructure money instead of budgeting for that in the future. Also, I know as we talk about housing, Home's Road is, continues to be a discussion that potentially we could look at that also, as it seems like housing is moving in that direction also, so.
For what it's worth, the State Spark Committee has initiated a hearing process at locations across the state. One of those was in Kansas City today. So Jacob Wood, Lauren Driscoll, Eric Brown from the Chamber, Mitch Robinson from the EDO, Hannah Stanbach. EDO, Hannah Stanbaugh from, from the county, as well as some others, were in attendance today to address that, that committee in terms of available state dollars. And that conversation, we, we all collaborated last week to kind of, each, each opportunity to speak was limited to two minutes, and so I think that message collectively was the county giving an overview of the survey that they'd done and response that they got from that. Jacob and Lauren providing comments about, primarily about housing need, maybe a little bit about childcare. The EDO adding to that, and childcare, Chamber kind of picking up with childcare and broader business needs, all with the intention of just kind of getting on record what our local needs might be as they try to figure out how they're going to go forward with those funds.
Thank you.
Awesome. If there's nothing else, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll see you next week.